There he is, he's ready to go.
Good evening, welcome to this evening's city council meeting.
Session two.
So we'll call this meeting to order and we have someone here tonight to lead us in our invocation, Mr. Mark Lopez, he's the lead chaplain at La Palma Correctional Center in Eloy. Mr. Lopez, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, city council members as well. I'm here on behalf of EAM, which is the Emergency Assistant Ministry, which as you know is an interfaith coalition of Casa Grande Faith Community for private social services, agencies and local government to coordinate and mobilize efforts to provide emergency food, shelter and other services to the city of Casa Grande. But I'm also here as a representative of La Palma Correctional Center in Eloy as the lead chaplain for the correctional facility of which we have over 3,090 men, all male facility, that houses out-of-state placement for California Department of Corrections. So, on behalf of EAM and La Palma Correctional Center, let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, your wisdom and support. As we begin this meeting, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we hear from this community, its business leaders and its rich diverse people that make up Casa Grande. And continue to remind us that when all is said and done this evening, all that we accomplish as a team should be for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. All right, let the record show that the council is present.
Mayor McFarland, the minutes tonight, we have, I move approval of the council regular minutes, meeting minutes from February 20th, and we also had a special council meeting on February 20th, which I also move approval for, and that we accept for the record the health care benefits trust board of trustees, January 19th, 2018, Historic Preservation Commission, February 22nd, 2018, Industrial Development Authority, September 27th, 2017, Police Personnel Retirement Board, February 1st, 2018, as these are presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minute's been approved. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of claims against the city from February 14th through February 27th, as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Note, Mr. Herman abstained. Okay, then, meeting agenda approval. Any changes from staff?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff would ask that you remove item K1 of the agenda.
Anybody else have any changes? Okay, take a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment as amended.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the agenda with the exception of K1.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda's been approved. We have no special presentation, so we'll move to consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Anybody have anything you wanted to change on it?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Miss Rice.
Yes.
Councilmember Miss Hare.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember whatever.
Yes.
Councilmember Cadd.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, item H, called the public. So any public comments, anyone in the audience who would like to approach the council? You're welcome to do so at this point in time, even if you didn't fill out a comment card, we will allow for anybody who would like to speak to come forward. Now is your opportunity. We don't bite.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, seeing none, then we'll close public comments and move to item I, award of contracts. So I won. And are we going to do these, consider these as a, in a combination? Or are you going to do one at a time?
Mayor, what we'd like to do is just make one presentation for all four development agreements, and then I'm sure you're going to have to have separate votes on each one, if that's all right with you.
Okay, all right, great, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Tice.
So, the next four items are four separate development agreements pertaining to four subdivisions, and the development agreements are very similar in nature, but they have a few specific modifications for each of the unique characteristics for these subdivisions we're going to talk about. So just want to walk you through that a little bit and give you, give council a good understanding of the particulars for each case. Essentially, these four development agreements will allow the financial assurance that's currently posted for each of these four subdivisions, and each four has a bond in place, a subdivision improvement bond. The development agreement will allow that bond to be released by the city in exchange for a prohibition on issuance of any building permits within these subdivisions and a prohibition on the sale of any lots until such time as either, A, all the subdivision improvements are constructed and accepted by the city, or re-secured financially with a financial assurance that's susceptible to the city. Either all of the subdivision improvements would be secured, or the phase, a portion of the subdivision be secured in accordance with the phasing plan approved by the city. So that's essentially the meat of each development agreement, but they're, again, they're tailored a little bit for each of these four developments, and I'm going to walk you through those fairly quickly. So the first subdivision we're going to talk about is Carlton Commons. You can see where Carlton Commons is along the east side of Pier, south of Down. And Carlton Commons is a fairly large subdivision, has 594 lots, and there's about a $10 million financial assurance bond currently posted with this development, and the city's actually held that bond for some time. The subdivider has made the half-street improvements to Pier Road and Down Street, those have been completed and accepted by the city. The subdivider did install sewer mains, but those were not yet accepted by the city, but those are in the ground, and water mains and other utilities are also in the ground in place. The drainage basins, streets and lots have been rough graded but not finished, so there's no pavement for the local streets, the basins aren't finished, there is some rough grading of, the whole subdivision has been completed. The perimeter subdivision walls and landscaping have not been constructed. So the $10 million bond is to cover completion of all those improvements that we just looked And again, if, with approval of this subdivision agreement, this development agreement for this subdivision, that $10 million bond will be released, but no building permits will be issued, nor will lot sales occur until the improvements are completed and accepted or re-secured. The next subdivision is a Royal Vista. It's south of McCarthy, of McCarthy, McCarthy Road, McCartney Road, and west of Pier. And it has 278 lots. We're going to, but not all the lots are included within the development agreement. The lots outlined in yellow are not part of the development agreement, and I'll talk a little bit about why that is in just a second.
Where is this again?
So in this case, the subdivider has constructed the required McCartney Road improvements along their frontage, as well as the Pier Road improvements along their eastern boundary, Potabom along their western boundary, and then a section of Royal Trail down to the south. Those have all been completed and are accepted by the city, so they're not part of the security. The sewer mains have been constructed but not approved or accepted, so the sewer mains within this area, within the vacant lot area, are subject to a current financial security, and their security's approximately $4 million. Basins and lots have been rough graded. McCartney Road wall and landscape have been completed. Pier Road wall and landscape have not been yet installed. So there's our McCartney Road frontage, you can see it's well done, perimeter walls in place, landscaping's in place, but not the similar improvements to Pier Road. So I mentioned a little bit about the, let me back up here, about the 12 lots that were outlined in yellow and they're now outlined in red. Those 12 lots were actually sold by the subdivider to the Leona Group, who's a charter school builder, and Leona Group actually filed a plan with the city to build a charter school on this site sometime maybe 2008, around then, but never, never completed that plan. But, Leona Group is not a party to this development agreement, so they could in fact sell those lots. So what the development agreement does is it retains or requires the posting of a new financial assurance for the subdivision improvements needed to serve these 12 lots. In case Leona goes out and sells them, then we are assured that whoever buys them can build on them. And I'm going to walk you through those improvements that will be assured, will be, have financial assurance posted for them. First off, the sewer main is what's needed to serve those 12 lots, so that will have to be included in a, in a new financial security. The, those drainage basins right there have to be finished for, to service those 12 lots. Pier Road, open space and landscaping just along the frontage would have to be done. And so, and then the, let me back up because I don't think I covered the road with you, which is a Royal Trail and a, so you can see that, there you go. Royal Trail and the internal streets are actually all paved there for this section, but they haven't been accepted by the city. They're dedicated, they're in public right of way, but not yet accepted. So those roads that are highlighted in certain gray would be part of the new financial assurance too. That financial assurance would be in the amount of around $793,000. So that would have to be posted, and then we would release the $4 million. And so, that would continue to be maintained, their security, until those improvements are basically finalized and approved by the city, accepted by the city. So we do recommend approval of that development agreement as well, with that condition. The next one is for Gila Buttes 1 and 2. Gila Buttes 1 and 2 is located south of Val Vista, just to the east of the Avalon subdivision and west of Pinale, Pinale Avenue. It's very large, it has 525 lots. No internal roads have been constructed. The sewer mains have been constructed but not approved nor accepted by the city, and also the water mains and other, other ground utilities have been installed. Basins, drainage basins, streets and lots have been rough graded. The Val Vista wall in phase 1, which is the section to the east half, has been completed. The west half of the wall in dash, yellow, has not been completed, and no landscaping has been completed along Val Vista. The development agreement does require, in this case, the developer to complete that wall along Val Vista prior to the, I was recording, a release of the financial assurance on file, so they will build the remainder of that perimeter wall along Val Vista, and they will install DG in the area between the wall and Val Vista Road to help dress it up a little bit and help with dust control. So there's what it looks like today. We're going to continue that wall that you see to the west, and it's going to be DG'd. So that's what's going to happen.
No trees?
No trees, just DG. And there are, there's no trees because there's no irrigation there to make them survive, to have them survive. I do want to note, though, that this development agreement does not address, at any level, Val Vista road improvements because we had a prior development agreement with Gila Buttes 1 and 2, a transportation agreement, that allowed them to pay the city about a million dollars, I think, for their Val Vista improvements in lieu of making those half-street improvements, which we have an escrow in sort of a CIP escrow account for Val Vista improvements. So staff does recommend that that development agreement be approved as well. The last, and that's also a $10 million security for Gila Buttes 1 and 2. The last subdivision is Mystic Trails. It's a very small subdivision, it's 11 lots, located just south of Ghost Ranch Road, between Ghost Ranch and basically the interstate, in this little county area you can see on the screen. So it's 11 lots, and there essentially have no subdivision improvements ever been made. It is platted subdivision, it is recorded, but no subdivision improvements have been made. The security is fairly small, it's around a half a million dollars. So no improvements have been constructed. Staff does recommend that that development agreement be approved as well. And that concludes my presentation.
Does Treacle Road extend on from where they are there?
Not yet.
Treacle Road does extend up to Val Vista, to Val Vista from McCartney through, through Vilago. I don't believe it goes north of Val Vista, though.
But don't we have plans for it to go north?
I think it stops at Val Vista, actually. I don't think it, I don't think this, this transportation plan calls for it to go north of Val Vista.
Okay, for some reason I thought, okay.
And that's a connector ultimately tied to it anyway.
Right, that's true.
So, just a couple of questions. The last two that you did are D.R. Horton properties, correct?
That is correct.
Wasn't the Gila Buttes one that, that they potentially had sold and then backed out?
So I think on the Gila Buttes, technically, my understanding is that it has been sold by D.R. Horton to an investor, but maybe the city attorney could talk about who actually is signing the agreement.
In fact, thank you Director Tice, Mayor, members of the council. If you look at the development agreement for Gila Buttes, it is between the city, it is between D.R. Horton, its crane, but also between the new landowner, which is like Gila, which is actually spelled G-I-L-L-A, 325 Land Investment. So they're the owner of the property, but their agreement, their sale agreement, D.R. Horton is still responsible for doing certain things on the property, such as they're going to keep the, you know, weed free and otherwise pending the, the completion of the improvements. Gila 325 would be the one that actually posts the bonds when they're ready to do it, or would be responsible too at this point.
And then the other question I had is, on all of these, I know that this was something that we had talked about and we had put in place to try and save the developers the bonding fees, and, and that's all well and good, but, but on all of them also, it says no immediate plans to sell lots. I mean, there's no, they haven't talked about any plans to develop any of these, or they just want to get out from underneath the bonds?
Mayor, the way that I characterize this is the landowners, the land developers are sort of putting these developments on ice for a while, right? Otherwise, they wouldn't be, you know, trying to release those securities, you know, and like, for example, in D.R. Horton's case, they are buying other finished lots in the community and building on those. They had Mission, Mission Ranch, which they owned the lots, they finished building out that, they're moving into Cottonwood Ranch, into Mission Royale, versus building on these other developments for now. My understanding is they, they have full intention to eventually develop them, but they want to, they feel that the lots that are within developed neighborhoods are more marketable currently. That's my understanding.
Does anybody here have any of those?
Mayor and council, Patrick Brown, Vice President of Land with D.R. Horton, addresses 20410 North 19th Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona, 85027. Happy to answer any questions. The answer's exactly that, that it's more, the market's ready for houses now. It's why D.R. Horton recently purchased approximately 466 lots in Casa Grande over the past two months. We have been one of the biggest builders in Casa Grande to date and keep thinking that we're going to hopefully grow our market share. We have high hopes for Casa Grande, we actually just toured our corporate office here last week, and they were very impressed with what's going on here. So, these two projects are to be in the future, but right now there's finished lot inventory that needs to get cleaned up before we move to new developments.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions? No?
I just appreciate your interest.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your vote on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What would happen if they, if they decided not to develop the lots? Should they just sit there, or depending on what the market does, or?
Yeah, from a, like anything, it's a land speculation play of what is the value today versus what we think it's going to be in a few years. Now, I think projects like Gila Buttes comes back to the market much quicker than Mystic Trails, and, and I won't be completely shocked if two years from now we're not bringing improvement plans and bonds right back to the city council and saying we're ready to go development. So it's just a, it's a function of market of what you can buy a finished lot for versus what you can actually get a developed lot. As you know, just probably seeing your own capital improvement programs, development costs are starting to go higher and higher, so it's making the stuff that's on the ground readily available a more, more value oriented option for us. But, it's coming, so, and I've shared that with the city manager as well as some of the staff, and it's coming, so.
As you know, we've got four big projects that have, that have been going forward. If, as those start to firm up, do the houses start getting built faster because the anticipated need for new, they're talking possibly in 2020 about 20,000 workers between two of the different projects that would, some would be temporary and some would be here as actual residents. And I just wanted to, if, if those things firm up, does that spur you guys to start trying to have some homes ready for the land rush, hopefully?
I would, I would say definitely it does. Anything you guys have done, which you've done a great job on the economic development front, is only going to spur more home building activity locally, as well as, as affordability comes into question in, really, the metro Phoenix area, as we saw in the run-up, we're, we'll see it again, where folks will be commuting out to Casa Grande as well. So, I think it's a mix of both, but keep doing, keep doing what you're doing, creating jobs here, because it's, we'll put some people in some homes then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One thing I like about this is too, you have, like I say, Gila Buttes and the Mystic Trails, every year you pay that financial assurance, it's going to make the cost of that lot go up. So this has helped to make more affordable housing, because, I mean, every year you have to pay for that, at some point someone's going to have to, you have to charge that to somebody.
It's a really, it's a great option. There's, the city doesn't really want to be in the business of building subdivisions. We don't want to be in the business of just holding bonds for no reason. I think it's a win-win for both sides, so appreciate you guys thinking outside the box on this.
And we, we've also talked about, you know, like, I keep going back to Gila Buttes, that's a big one, but you know, it'd be more feasible for you guys to take down, you know, 100 lots out of that and pay that. Is that very desirable to your company? I mean, is that going to help spur growth?
Absolutely. If you see Gila Buttes, it's really set up into two phases. So eventually, we will do an east half first, and then we would do a west half. So, when we come back, we will phase the plans with staff to make sure that we're up to your current code guidelines, and then set up a financial assurance for one half at a time.
So that'll help you guys and
Yep.
Also help our economic development.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any bills have any questions for Mr. Tice?
Are all of these phased pretty much? All four, do they, well, you have 11 lots, I don't imagine it would be phased, but the other three, are we guessing that that would be a phased, where they'd take so many lots and, and go ahead and finish them and do the fence and do everything that would needed to be around that amount of homes, or?
Mayor McFarland, Councilman Powell, it, first off, none of them are phased currently. There, there is one big subdivision, in this case, Gila Buttes and 500 and some odd lots. But, is it likely that they But is it likely that they would phase those and bite them off in smaller chunks and post security for that and make those improvements? I think yes. And our, our development agreement allows for that, our ordinance allows for that. The phasing plan has to be approved by the city, so we have to make sure that each phase can stand on its loan even if a future phase does not occur. So yes, I do believe they will be phased in smaller increments as they come up, as building occurs in them in the future.
I think this is really a friendly developer, city relationship and being able to win-win for both sides.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
All right, so let's take each one of these and I'll consider a resolution for item I-1.
Resolution number 4100, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving an amendment to the Development Agreement with Val Vista Centers, Inc., a Royal Vista Unit 2, and authorizing execution by the city manager.
Mayor McFarlane, I move for our passage of resolution number 4100.02 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 4100.02. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, now can I get a resolution number for item I-2, please?
Resolution number 4101.02, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving an amendment to the Development Agreement with Val Vista Centers, Inc., a Royal Vista Unit 2, and authorizing execution by the city manager.
Mayor McFarlane, I move for approval of resolution number 4101.02 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for item I-2, resolution 4101.02. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, can I get a resolution for item I-3, please?
A resolution number 4047.01, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a Development Agreement with Gila 325 Investment Land and D.R. Horton, Inc., these cranes, Gila Butz subdivision, and authorizing execution by the city manager.
Mayor McFarlane, I move approval of resolution number 4047.01 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 4047.01. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, finally, item I-4. Can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5086, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a Development Agreement with the City of Casa Grande and D.R. Horton, Inc., Mystic Trails subdivision, and authorizing execution of the Development Agreement by the city manager.
Mayor McFarlane, I move for approval of resolution number 5086 as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 5086. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right. We're going to, I think that last item of business actually is reports, but, oh, I'm sorry, K-2. I erased K-1 and went right by it. Item K-2.
Mayor McFarlane, members of the city council.
We didn't want to have an election.
It's that time of the year. Staff is, staff has recommended the mayor and council authorize the call of election for the city's 2018 mayoral and city council primary and general elections. The city's primary election is scheduled for August 28, 2018. This election is for the purpose of nominating candidates for the mayor and three council seats. All candidates receiving a majority vote cast at the primary election will be declared elected to that office without having to run at the general election. The general election is scheduled for November 6, 2018. The majority of all votes cast as required by the charter will be determined by utilizing the new methodology which mayor and council adopted several weeks ago. If not all the seats are filled at the primary election, then we will go on to the general election. Currently, we have three council members that are up for reelection and that includes council member Herman, council member Powell, council member Varela, and the mayor McFarlane's seat. Let's see, a total of at least 277 signatures are required and not more than 553 signatures will be required on the nomination petition. This year, the election will be just a little bit different in terms of your documents. We will have those available online, but of course, we'll also have them available printed if somebody wants to come in. But we will give our citizens an opportunity. If you want to print the information, you may print it online. However, if you do that, you also have to accept the responsibility to check it, to make sure there aren't any updates. We will also include on there for somebody to send me an email that says I've downloaded it, but here's my information if, in case we have any changes in the election process. Again, we will have them available also in hard copy. I am planning to offer a orientation, if you will, for anybody who's interested in coming to learn about the election process and what it will take to run for city council. And we will be doing that on March 14 at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers.
6 o'clock here?
Yes, sir. Here at the council chambers. But if you'd like to download it, it's also available for you to download. It will be posted on our city's website. I'd be happy to answer any questions, mayor and council.
Any questions?
Mayor McFarlane, I'd move approval of the city's primary election as scheduled and explained to us on, that we approve it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item K-2 is approved. Now, we go to reports, item N. I think it's the last item on the agenda. Let's see, we started with you last time, didn't I, Donna? All right, Lisa, your turn.
Um, let's see. Just a couple things. First, you know, thank you for all of you guys for attending the Cesar Chavez event. It was a successful event. It was great having all the students there and all the supporters and, you know, Ralph and I and the committee are very thankful for all the support and everything that everyone, the community has given to this cause. You know, 50 scholarships were given, actually 51. 51 scholarships were given and so we were really pleased with that. You know, I attended that night for the museum, you know, with the dueling pianos. And if none of you have gone to one of those yet, I really encourage you to go. I mean, it's something different and unique and it was just really fun. And so I, you know, for the museum committee did that, so I know a couple of the, I don't know, restaurants in town have done it too, but something different and really fun. Went to the IDA, Tommy Kaywood's retirement last meeting, and that just amazed me that he's been on that committee 38 years, 38 and a half years. So it, it.
You have to have term limits.
I know.
I didn't think you'd finish that other half year.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. But you know, it was, it's just so neat to see that he's dedicated so much time and energy and just took that job so serious and managed every penny, you know, when, when David, you know, was given, you know, some information about him and telling him how much, you know, this guy, you know, paid attention to the finances. He was a treasurer and just unbelievable service to this, to the city. So congratulations to Tommy Kaywood and thank you for his service. And thanks for all of you guys for sitting in on those transit study meetings. You know, we're kind of getting to the end here, so hopefully you were able to give the committee feedback on, you know, how you felt on that. And I think that's, I guess that's it. That's it for me.
Well?
Attended the, the city transit meetings that were being held and found them real informative, a lot of good information in terms, and the preparation of the information that was presented to us was very well done, very professional, very succinct and to the point. So obviously, we have a lot of thinking to do and planning to do around what options we have. The same thing with the city strategic, the second part of the strategic planning process gave us an opportunity to really crystallize the strategic plan and now leaving it in the city staff to really put the action plan behind the division of the city and city staff. Had an opportunity to go with Matt to the gun range and found it to be quite an experience. I'd never, I'd never been out there. He said, "Meet me at the range." And I said, "Well, you know, my daughter wanted to, she'd never shot, so she, and I had never, it was on my bucket list, so I got that taken care of." But you know, it's very clean, very well taken care of. All the folks that are there are very respectful. They have all their safety rules and everything, so it was quite a, quite a good experience. And finally, with Cesar Chavez, really thank the city council for their donations, the site and auction items, the participation of the, of the city. And, and thank you, Lisa, for serving on the committee for the 12 years and truly appreciate everybody's efforts on it.
Matt?
I'm sorry. Thanks, Chris. Can I still talk about what we did even though other people talked about it, Brett? Legally?
I honestly have no idea what you're talking about.
Like the Cesar Chavez, the thing that we're voting on. Yeah.
As long as you're going to be a brief report about it, it's perfectly fine. It's not something that we're voting on later.
Perfect. So it was great that Chris Mahia spoke and she's past president of the Casa Grande Youth Commission. And she gave a great speech, got a standing ovation deservedly, and it's neat to see our youth of Casa Grande and all the citizens supporting it, the community supporting it about their education. And she's had some tremendous opportunities thanks to the Cesar Chavez Committee and the rest of our community. So it's exciting to see those people come back and give their reports. I did get to enjoy Casa Grande this weekend, went to the gun range. So now we got one more person that knows and it was very crowded again, as always. And it was a very nice day. And the day before that, I got to go hiking because I had some family in town, so we went hiking on Saturday on our trails that the Americor built and they're still holding up very well. So that's a neat thing and they really enjoyed it. Youth Commission, last Saturday, held their, and their Youth Leadership Day. And we had about close to 100 kids there and they came from Superior, Santa Rosa, Douglas, Casa Grande, Coolidge. So we had them from Alurpinau County and we were just excited and it turned out very well. They're very proud and they planned most of it, they planned all of it themselves with very little help from us as adults. So they did a wonderful job of that and that's part of their democracy competition, so we'll see how that goes, which they're doing on April 4. Also that, the day of shredding is coming up and Kayla and her group built a wonderful video that went on the Facebook and everything the day after we learned that we had to change the date for no fault of the sponsors and no fault of the Youth Commission. So we're getting that date and we'll have it next week for you guys, but we're anticipating, it's going to be in April, so we'll get the exact date hammered down. But thank you, Kayla, up there for your wonderful video and we got that all taken care of. And the transit study was pleasantly surprising and I'm really glad to see some solutions they came up with. So I'm excited to see that move forward. And?
Mr. Powell? Well, I attended, like most of us did, the Cesar Chavez and it's the best one I've been to. I thought the speakers did an exceptional job. The young people, 51, whatever it was, scholarships, that's big. And the Cesar Chavez's grandson, I liked what he had to say best this year, but I think the outstanding thing of all was that Lisa was up there helping to co-chair it and do the announcing. And Ralph is the one that started this and was very well recognized for his service and the time he's been doing it, which it's certainly something to be proud of. The Cowboy Days in Odomtosh is over. The Odomtosh had the biggest crowd we've had since 2009. We had 450 teams in the Canadian Day roping, which is huge. The sun was going down when they finally, we had somebody go out and interview Canadians. That was a good article. And, and so things went, things went well and, and as I say, we couldn't, without Larry, this thing wouldn't work. So I, he always says, you know, but I appreciate what he does and Tony Evar and some of the other guys that really jumped in and, and helped, but that's, I'll pass it on. Mary?
So I see Stephen has now celebrated the ending of Cowboy Days to shave. Larry? Larry? You know, I really do want to thank Cox Communications for all of the charitable activities that they do. And I was not really aware of the program that they have that for $9.95 a month for qualifying families to be able to have access to Wi-Fi. Many people don't realize how important the Wi-Fi is and I'm just going to repeat myself over and over and over again. All schools, that's their main communications now. That's where they get their assignments, that's where parents get notices from the school and that, so it's very important that wise besides just the obvious, being able to get information, do the research. The other is healthcare information. How many of us access, our doctors will call and say, "Hey, if you've signed up for this, you look for that." Another reason why it's really becoming more necessary. And then most important is to me is the employment, finding that a, the largest percentage of job applications, they will see, do not call us, do not fax us, do not write us. Go online, go to our website and fill out the application. If you can't do that, you can't get a good job. And so I thank Cox for that. What I'd like to do is see maybe through some of our, whenever we have different activities with Casa Grande, that we do an effort of educating people on how to apply for this, have something at the libraries, handouts or whatever to make people aware of, that they, they can apply for this and that they can qualify. And really, $9.95 is just, I think, an amazing price and I'd get it if I could. Final part is the transit study again. I'm very pleased, I, the whole process has just been very straightforward, very informative, very down-to-earth and realistic. It's about our community. It's not about some program that other cities have done and they're trying to put our square peg into the round spot. And so it's going to be Casa Grande's plan. The options we have, very realistic. And then what I really, really liked about it were that it came with the numbers. It came with ridership numbers, but it came with the cost, the price, and where potential places where the money's going to come from. So well done whoever brought these folks on board. Larry, I'll give it to you and then you can thank everybody else.
You know, ditto on the transit. I was really pleased and, and you know, Lisa, they were very appreciative of everything that you've done representing the council on that. And so I think some of the things on social media that has been brought up lately about transit and our need for it, it was interesting for me to read it and then mark off that was part of it, that was part of it. So I think that they really did a complete job in not just what we wanted as leaders, but what the, the community needs. So I was really happy with that. A couple things, the Chavez was wonderful. Matt's wife won a lot of money. But I had an opportunity to sit at a table with a young lady from the Tohod-Odom Reservation and had a great conversation with her and she's going to Brown University, which is a very big deal for anybody, but let alone somebody from the Navajo Nation, or Tohod-Odom Nation. And it was really inspiring to see that these are kids that really, really are going to benefit from. are kids that really, really are going to benefit from every dollar that we spent, even though I didn't win anything. And then I wanted to mention the opening Black Box Foundation, and theater had their opening on Saturday night at the Women's Club. It was very exciting for me to have been a part of that before and now be part of it as a councilperson, and to see everybody there, and people were talking about how proud they were of our city for understanding the need for, you know, for that type of venue in downtown. And so it was a very festive night, and people were really excited. And then I just wanted to hats off to the mayor because we've really had an influx of boards and commission applicants. We did four more, four or five today. We have some in a couple of weeks, and I think it's encouraging when we have that many of our community members coming forward and wanting to serve to the point that we have to, you know, kind of turn folks away. So it really is making a difference in us being a little bit more organized. And then we had the cactus fly in this weekend, and I've heard some great comments about what went on out at the airport, so it was a busy time.
Well, thank you, everybody, and just to kind of echo on the boards and commissions, we have 15 different boards and commissions that are available for volunteerism, so if anybody is interested, please keep an eye on the city's website. It's always posted there, and you can get updates. We're also with Donna's help. She's been a huge help in terms of organizing, really organizing the, the boards and commissions. We're looking at all of the, basically the descriptions, if you want to call it a job description, basically, we're building from scratch all new job descriptions for every board and commission. So each director is taking the, the ordinance that formed the board and commission and then pulling the job responsibilities out and putting it on one page. Also, we'll tell you the term and what the term limits are and how many people are on the board and all that good stuff, so a lot of good work being done, and thanks, thanks to Donna's help, and thanks to staff's help and directors doing all that heavy lifting. As far as activities, it was, it's been crazy busy, and I know we've all been to a lot of different events. I know I've been with a lot of you at a lot of those different events, so thanks for attending and thanks for participating, and thanks for everything you do for, for all of our organizations in town. I know myself, after the season...
Should be in there.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. It's, it's, we should be there, so. But we were at the property on Saturday, or Friday night, and then Saturday morning, 9 o'clock, I was back for the Boys and Girls Club, their, their Youth of the Year brunch, and we had 59 kids that were honored from all the different branches around the valley, from Arizona City to the, really the three we have here in Casa Grande, and it was great to see all the young people there. They, they were just, it's, it's, it's inspiring to me to see that we have the quality of young people that we have in town, so, and it's great to see them all, you know, participating in this type of activity. So it was a lot of fun, and we had, we had a great time. The Cesar Chavez was wonderful. This last week, we had a, the Pinau County Regional Transportation Authority meeting in Apache Junction, and we approved the Citizens Committee, the Oversight Committee, and the representative from Casa Grande is Bob Jackson, so I'll announce that today, but Bob has volunteered to be that, that, part of that Oversight Committee, so I thought he was probably one of the most qualified, and he was willing to do it, so, so even better. So we have a good representative there. We did our meeting also with Strategic Plan this past week, so I want to thank the council for your time and, and efforts in that regard. I think we will come together with some good ideas, good plans. I know, I know staff then met that afternoon, and I think even the next day, did you not, Larry, to put together some additional kind of action plans and things?
Staff actually met that afternoon, and we'll be meeting again in a couple of weeks.
Okay, and we'll have that pretty much finalized with the Rose that we talked about. So hang on, and if you want to see, see it firsthand, come to the, to the State of the City on March 14 at the property at 11:30. We'll have the unveiling of the Strategic Plan for the city and the Rose, and we'll talk a little bit more in depth on, on it at that time. So you can go online, right, Kayla, online to sign up for, for it, and so I encourage everybody to do that, and look forward to seeing everybody out at the property. This week, we've got Arbor Days this Friday on the 9th, and it's at O'Neill Park at 11 o'clock. So if you want to come out and help us plant a tree for Arbor Day, then look forward to seeing everybody there. Also getting a chance to take a tour of the new middle school and elementary school on this Thursday on the 8th. It's in the afternoon, so we're going to go take a look at the new school and see how it's going. I'm excited to see that. And Boys and Girls Club Golf Tournament, go online, sign up. It's on March 31st, so help support the Boys and Girls Club. I appreciate everybody helping out with everything that you do, do, so. That's all I have. I want to thank everybody, and I guess we can adjourn. Good night.